Well hello, welcome to week two of our virtual online Lenten study. If you are just joining us, it's never too late to catch up. So the format of this study is to A benefit those who need to worship and study and connect with God in the local church at their own pace. Covid has completely changed our view, or at least mine and my definition on gathering. And while I still think it's so important for the body of Christ to come together safely, physically together, I think it is so important for us and vital for the church to also gather virtually at a distance and stay connected to one another however we can. So the format of this study is we go live every Wednesday at noon during Lent. That's the six weeks prior to Easter. And then after we go live at noon, I also convert this into a YouTube link and send out an email that you can refer to all week long as a reflection, a point of prayer. There are songs included, all the scripture references are there, so you can participate on many different levels. I also encourage you to contact me, to email me back, let me know your thoughts, how God is moving, any ideas that He's placing on your heart. I would love, and the whole point of me offering this to the church is to stay connected, to do this Bible study together. So when this ends and it is no longer live, I'm going to input my email address, how you can get connected to me, you can Facebook message the church, you can call us at 337 474-1500 and ask for Reverend Amy, "I want to be available to you and to be in conversation with you so that we can grow in God's love, God's grace, and God's Word together." So, quick recap from last week. We talked about fasting, we talked about an introduction to Lent, that it is a time for us to come face to face with who we really are. Yes, there is goodness within us, but yes, we are fallen and sinful people. So we come face to face with the realization, we look in that mirror at who we are, no filters, right? And by the grace of God, we're called to repent, we're led to repent, and confess our sin to God and embrace His Son who defeated death as our Savior. And through believing Christ and accepting Him as our Savior, we are then regenerated, we are brought into this new life with Christ. There is hope. And Lent is a time for us to really connect, repent, and renew that relationship with God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, and renew our hope in the atoning work of the cross, that the Father thinks that this world is worth saving, that you and I, everyone we ever have looked in the eye that will ever exist is worth saving, and that by the power of the Holy Spirit, the church, you and I, can mediate, we can serve God's people, we can help God save this world. So, this week I want to expound upon what we decided to do last week. I hope that you entered into this covenant with me, Reverend Amy, here at St. Luke Simpson United Methodist Church, to fast from apathy, to fast from not caring, to fast from putting on our blinders and ignoring what is happening to our brothers and sisters around us. And that's gonna look different for all sorts of people, that's gonna look different for us individually, that's gonna look different for us as a church, and that's kinda where I wanna pick up today. I want to continue to root this study in the Word, in Bible, in Scripture, so that we take direction from the Lord Himself. But I also, in the follow-up emails that you'll get from me, and if you haven't signed up for the emails, drop your email in the comment, message us, call us, email me, and let me know your email so we can stay in contact with one another. But I want to help us understand how we can go from spiritual practices to spiritual actions that will not only serve our relationship with God and serve God, but it will help us serve others, right? So the first scripture reference that I have for you today, let me grab my Bible, is from Matthew chapter 20. And I'm gonna put all of our scripture references from today in the comments section in just a little bit. So our first scripture reference is Matthew chapter 20, verses 27 and 28. And Jesus says, "Instead, whoever wants to become great among you must be your servant, and whoever wants to be first must be your slave. Just as the Son of Man did not come to be served, but to serve, and to give his life as a ransom for many." It's the Word of God telling us, reminding us, teaching us that Jesus is our example, right? And Jesus came to serve, not to be served. So that is our example, that is how we should enter into and focus on fasting from apathy. We are going to no longer want to be served, but to serve. So last week, we began the study reflecting and searching Scripture for wisdom and purpose behind fasting. We talked about two examples of fasting, the future King David, and we talked about Jesus Himself and the reasons why they fasted, the circumstances around, why they fasted, and when they fasted, and we're gonna talk about, connect those dots a little bit later. So we all agreed, at least I hope to, to accept this challenge of fasting from apathy. And chances are, this isn't gonna happen overnight, right? It is a process, just like our sanctification to become holy and righteous, it is a process, it is a journey. But with God's grace, we can walk along this journey together each day, being mindful and helping one another, holding each other accountable to keep fasting from apathy in ways that not only help ourselves or serve our own relationship with God, but serve others and help our relationship with others and with God. I'm so excited to see DeeDee and Carrie on here with me. I'm just so excited that you're joining in live, it really, it just warms my heart. So, we are going to take this journey together. And if you've already started trying to practice empathy for others, and if you've already started to kind of take those blinders off, peel those protective layers that we often put on so that we shield ourselves from seeing what is happening around us, it's not easy. We are called, we are charged, we are invited to take the blinders off as Christians, and not only see, but respond, spiritually respond and act to serve others. I've said it before, but I'll say it again, George Donaghyan, his book really inspired this study, and I want to quote him from his book. And this is kind of one of those prayers that I've had on my heart for this study, for our purpose for gathering virtually and staying connected, is this. "I pray that this study moves us from internal practices, from only having internal practices and personal practices of piety and devotion, onto external deeds of compassion and mercy together for others." So let's do this, right? So the second scripture reference that I want to draw to your attention is a quick reference from James, the Book of James, it's chapter 1, verse 22. And this is what the author of the Book of James writes. "Do not merely listen to the Word and so deceive yourselves; do what it says." So that's, that's our hope today, is that not only do we read the Word and listen to the Word, consume the Word, but we also obey the Word, that we learn from the Word and grow in wisdom and ability today. We want to not just merely listen to the Word, but do as it says. And the Word, what is the Word to us? That is one of those, I love words, okay? If you know me, I love the Bible, I love the rich language and history, that one word, the tense of the verb, passive, active, can change everything. But when we talk about the Word in regards to Scripture, we mean the biblical text of the Lord. We also mean the Word, meaning Jesus, the Word made flesh, right? If we go back to Genesis, we see that God created by the power of the Spirit and the Word that He spoke. And we know from the Book of John that the Word was originally with God, the Word was God, and always will be God, and took on flesh. So that Word, we only, we not only listen to the Scripture, we mirror the actions of the Word, we mirror the actions of Jesus. We live by both the textual Word and the physical Word life. We follow the Word, we study the Word, and I pray that we act upon the Word, being literal Scripture, and literally the flesh of Jesus Christ that He took on. Jesus is our living example of how we can live this life as an individual, and how we can live together as the body of Christ, the church of Christ, the church universal. So our personal practices, right, of living in relationship with God, strengthening that relationship with God, our trust in God, our communication with God is absolutely necessary. Spiritual practices, piety, devotion, it is necessary for our souls, our hearts, our spiritual growth, our spiritual maturity, our faith lived out. These practices shape and mold our inner life, they mature our hearts, I believe they soften our hearts. And through this relationship, this personal relationship, God helps us to love Him more deeply in ways that draw us nearer to God's Word. We become open to God's direction and guidance in our daily lives, prayer, Scripture, meditation, walks with God, quiet reflection, all these means of growing in God's grace set a solid foundation for the renewal of our souls, the daily care of our own self and our personal relationship with God. But it also does something else, it prepares us for deployment, it prepares us for spiritual action. That private spiritual practice that we have, that becomes just part of who we are and how we live, actually continually prepares us for the constant call, charge, and invitation that God offers to us daily to serve others. So it's a way that He sort of recharges and renews us daily. He provides what we need and speaks to us through those moments so that we can help Him move and speak and care and tend for others on our path, just like Jesus did. When you think back or read through, let's say, the early chapters of Acts, if you have not read the Book of Acts, I, I love it, I think every Bible study I ever do always refer to Acts. It is just refreshing for me as a person who was called into the life of the church, who has been called to shepherd people and continually grow and be involved in the life of the church, Acts just gives me hope and fresh perspective. So I encourage you to read through the Book of Acts, it's wonderful because it's truly the birth of the church, meaning the laypeople, the hands and feet, the body of Christ that is us, being inspired and led by the Holy Spirit that is introduced to us in a, an amazing and new way. So in these early chapters of Acts, the earliest followers of Jesus are not just introduced, but we see their daily life. We are invited into that early beginning of the church and these faith communities. When we begin to find in Scripture somewhat of them finding some sort of balance between serving their own relationship with God and serving others through acts of compassion and piety, serving God through acts of devotion, and then pooling their resources together and serving others together as a community of faith. Our growing and continuous internal spiritual practices, I cannot stress that enough, it leads to and strengthens our external actions in the name of Jesus Christ. In other words, we benefit from both, both spiritual practices and spiritual actions. So let's look for a minute on how prayer and action combine to help us love and serve not just our God, but others as well. So turn with me, if you have your Bible, to Acts chapter 1. I want to look around verse 12 to 14. And this is right after Jesus has ascended into heaven, He's resurrected, defeated death, the tomb is empty, He walks around the earth as the resurrected Christ, revealing Himself to many people, and then He ascends into heaven in His bodily form, and promises to come again for His church, for all people, all believers. But in the meantime, He's going to send a gift from His Father. And so that's kinda where we pick up. So Jesus has ascended, and now the disciples and the followers, they've returned to Jerusalem from the hill called the Mount of Olives. This is verse 12 in chapter 1 of Acts. "A Sabbath day walked from the city. When they arrived, they went upstairs to the room in which they were staying. Those present were Peter, John, James, and Andrew, Philip, and Thomas, Bartholomew, and Matthew, James, the son of Alphaeus, Simon the Zealot, Judas, the son of James. They were also joined together constantly in prayer, along with the women, and Mary, the mother of Jesus, and with His brothers." So the disciples stay together in what I love to call active waiting, I did not coin that phrase. But isn't that beautiful to think that they were waiting, you've heard waiting patiently, but this was waiting actively on the Lord. It is a way in which they knew that something was coming, they knew that Jesus was sending a gift, and in the meantime, they were preparing themselves. They were waiting and listening for signs, loving the Lord, loving one another, but most of all, they were in constant prayer. So take notice how we can relate to these disciples. Without the physical Jesus, right, we don't see the physical Jesus here, He has ascended into heaven and not yet returned. Without the physical Jesus, the church still gathered, the followers of Jesus gathered, and yes, they have personal, each have personal relationships with Godfather, Son, but now they gather together and they await the Holy Spirit. They gather together and allow their personal spiritual practices, lead them, leading them into preparation for this external action and witness that they're about to be charged with and called to and invited to be a part of. These disciples still mimic the processes Jesus took. Jesus would always make time to go first away and prepare and pray alone with the Father. It was like He was being rejuvenated and, and reset and recharge, and then He would spring into action. So it's really important that we pick up on these patterns that actually mimic Jesus. They act like Jesus before any major act, before any decision that was externally acted upon, they first spent time in prayer. So remember from last week, we talked about that, Jesus went off, prayed, and then was prepared for His public ministry. So let's, let's jump to Acts chapter 2, when the Holy Spirit does arrive. So our disciples have been in the upper room, the followers of Jesus have gathered, they've been praying and living together, and then the time comes for the Holy Spirit to fall upon them. And Acts chapter 2, verses 1 through 4 paints this picture for us. It says, "When the day of Pentecost came, they were all together in one place. Suddenly, like a sound blowing of a violent wind, came from heaven and filled the whole house where they were sitting. They saw what seemed to be like tongues of fire that separated and came to the rest of each, to rest on each of them. All of them were filled with the Holy Spirit and began to speak in other tongues as the Spirit enabled them." So the Holy Spirit arrives, just as Jesus has promised, and the followers of Jesus, they've been praying and waiting and preparing for what was to come next. And in Acts chapter 2, verses 1 through 4, we see that the Holy Spirit does indeed fall upon those followers, and this Holy Spirit allows them this gift of communicating in many different languages and dialects to those Jews that were gathered from all around for the festival of Pentecost. Now right here, we see that our spiritual practices do indeed prepare us for spiritual actions. Even when we don't know exactly what's coming next, our spiritual practices really do prepare us in mighty ways. Prayer was the foundation upon the first acts of the disciples ministry. Throughout the Book of Acts, you can read and bear witness to the ministry, the service, and witness that flowed from the disciples as they helped those around them hear the good news, experience the good news, and also equip those that were just hearing it to join in, to become an active member of this growing body of Christ. And through this, through all of this, God declares to the world that you are worth saving, that Jesus, His Son, has come and defeated death, and that eternal life is available for us. It is the glorious mystery, it is the good news, it is the gospel that is being spread here. The disciples' lives, just like Jesus, offer a life to imitate. Think about that for a second. Jesus is our utmost example, but we can also turn to the disciples to look and see how to live. They imitate Jesus in that prayer and then action, prayer then service pattern. Personal spiritual practices, they give way, they strengthen us for those spiritual actions, both individually and together. In one of the classes that I'm taking right now for seminary, our professor reminded us that the answer is not always just wishing we could go back to the way things have always been done. In other words, I'm not saying that if we would just act like the people in Acts, that would fix the church as a whole. I think in offering up Acts as a reference, as a guide for us in spiritual action, I don't mean to insinuate, right, that if we go back to that model, everything would be fixed and fine. I think A, the world has changed drastically from that time, and B, I cling to the philosophy of Frederick, I think it's Herzog, I never can pronounce things very well, but it's H-E-R-Z-O-G. He says that the church has and always will be in need of reform until the day that Christ comes for His bride and completes that sanctification process of the creation of the church. He says, "Haven't we inherited an unfinished reformation of the church?" You know, we're, think about that for a second. The church of today can both learn from Acts and see how both spiritual practices as individuals and spiritual actions as a group can strengthen the church, can equip this body of Christ in helping transform and grow God's church further, so that the growing church, the sanctifying church, the church that's being perfected by grace, can still mediate, can be a catalyst of God's grace and a message, a beacon of light that, that shouts salvation for all. Just like those earliest Christ followers in Acts, we too are faced with the invitation from God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. It's a calling, it's a charge from Christ Himself. What spiritual actions is the church called to today? And I feel like Matthew 25, verses 31 through 46 is a beautiful example of spiritual actions that the body of believers are, are going to be held accountable for. This is the charge that God expects us to live out daily, and how are we doing? So let me grab my Bible again, and let's turn to Matthew chapter 25. And when you have time, verses 31 through 46, will probably put goosebumps on the back of your neck, but for now, we're just gonna zone in on 34 through 36 for a second. So this is Christ talking about the future final judgment, okay? He says, "Then the king will say to those on his right, 'Come, you who are blessed by My Father, take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world. For I was hungry, and you gave Me something to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave Me something to drink. See, I was a stranger, and you invited Me in. I needed clothes, and you clothed Me; I was sick, and you looked after Me; I was in prison, and you came to visit Me.'" How can you and I keep this call to action? How can we continue to fast from apathy? I think we can pray together that the Holy Spirit would open our eyes and, and make us more aware of those around us. I know in this season, it's been a doozy, right? We're almost tired of talking about it, but I think we need to realize our reality, and the reality is when we go through valley times, our focus, it just, human nature, we just focus inward, we're looking down at our feet, we're asking God for help for us. It's so tempting to just let everything that is around us fall to the wayside, and you walk in your own valley, I'm busy in mine, right? And I'm preaching to myself. But I think that through God's grace and through our Christian faith, we are called to notice those around us in valley times. We are called to see the hearts and the needs of those around us. And I pray that we can seize the moments that are brought upon our path when we can both feed the literal and the spiritual hungry, clothe the literal and spiritual naked, and tend to the literal and spiritual sick and imprisoned, just like Jesus did, just like the early followers did, just like generations before us did. This is our chapter in the church's history, in the church's journey to becoming sanctified and made perfect in Christ upon His return. This is our chapter. What, what is gonna be written about us? Have we prayed to prepare for action, tending to those around us in need of literal and, and physical and, and spiritual help, tending to those on our path who need compassion and care, comfort, clothing, cool sips of water, who need the church, who need you and It's a holy burden, but God equips us, He prepares us through our personal piety and devotion and prayer life. He calls us as a church during our worship and times that we gather like this together to tend to His people in need. He gives us the resources, and maybe you only have a piece of the puzzle, but maybe I'm holding the corner piece that you've been searching for. And unless we're working together as a body of Christ, where the hand and the feet and the eyes and the nose and the mouth and the heart all function together, listening to the head, which is Jesus Himself, Jesus is the head of the body of the church, guiding and directing and calling each of these pieces to come together and function in a way that saves people, that lets the whole world know that they're worth saving. It's bigger than you and me, and yet God loves every hair on your head. So both our individual relationship with God and our relationship with the church of God, they're so vital, they're so important, they're such a gift. So I pray that you sign up for the email reflection because I really wanna hear from you in how we can tend to God's people in a literal way, in a spiritual way, in a physical way, emotional way. a physical way, emotional way, mental way, how can we feed the hungry? How can we clothe the naked? How can we visit and be there to support the sick and those who feel imprisoned in their own homes, who feel isolated? What can we do as a body of Christ? Be praying about that and then let us come together through these reflection times to make a plan and put it into action with the power of the Holy Spirit. Let us pray. Lord, grant us bold faith and courage to act spiritually on Your behalf. Lord, help us to study the early church so that we can serve as today's church. Lord, guide our steps so that we meet those who are lacking what we have plenty of, so that we can serve You and Your children, we can tend to You and Your sheep. Sovereign Lord, we ask all these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ through the power of the Holy Spirit that moves within us and among us. Amen. Let the church say amen. So again, I am going to end the live stream in just a moment and post my email address. Um, you can message the church, I'll share the Scripture references, all sorts of goodies, but I really want you on my email list. Um, it would just mean so much to me to connect with you and share with you and hear from you in that way, so that we can continue to be the hands and feet, the body of Christ, taking direction from the head of the church, which is Jesus, our example, right, the almighty imitator, in which we can learn how to pray and act. So it has been wonderful. Thank you for sharing, um, this noon time with me, setting aside time, even if you're watching later, how precious you are to us here at St. Luke Simpson, how precious you are to God. Just know you are worth saving, you are worth the work of the atonement on the cross. Um, God loves you so much, and so do we here at the church. Um, if you need anything, reach out, I pray that we can stay in contact. And until next week at noon time again, I'll hold you in my prayers. You have a great day.